Hello, welcome to the USCB Center for the Arts. I'm Bonnie Hargrove, I'm the director here, and tonight we have the honor of hosting the 2020 City of Beaufort Candidate Forum. The forum is organized in partnership with Beaufort Regional Chamber of Commerce. And according to USCB's rigorous COVID-19 safety protocol, people are, people who are directly involved with us tonight, we are all making sure people are six feet apart, and mask when appropriate. That includes any of the organizers, the team, the panelists, and candidates. The room and stage has been set up for safe social distancing, and masks, as I've said, is encouraged. Welcome to the civic-minded viewers tuning in to this forum, online and on the lawn outside the Center for the Arts. Now Ian Scott, President of the Beaufort Regional Chamber, will share a little bit about tonight's format.
Thank you Bonnie, and thank you to USCB for co-hosting tonight's event. The purpose of the forum is to introduce voters to the candidates standing for election in the city of Beaufort, and to give the community an opportunity to hear these candidates' thoughts on top issues. Tonight's forum will have two sections: first, the mayoral; second, the council candidates. The mayoral portion will last 45 minutes, the council portion will last one hour. The forum will be a, the format will be a panel-question style. Each candidate will have an opportunity to respond to each question. Candidates may not ask questions of or speak directly to each other. While this is not a debate, each candidate is allowed up to two 30-second rebuttals they may use at any time during the forum. All questions will come from our panelists. There will be no questions from those assembled in the room today. All questions were determined by the panelists earlier today, in fact, just a few hours ago. No questions were shared in advance with any candidate or any of their campaigns. Bob LaFavi, Dean of the Beaufort Campus at USCB, will serve as our moderator tonight. He will keep the forum on track and on time. We've asked the candidates to keep their responses brief so we can cover as many topics as possible now. To introduce the panel and to kick off the forum, Bob LaFavi.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, and welcome to USCB Center for the Arts. Tonight's four panelists were chosen by the Chamber and USCB to reflect our community. They each represent themselves only, and as Mr. Scott said, they worked together this afternoon to formulate their questions that haven't been shared with the candidates or their campaigns. Your panelists this evening are Ben Koppich, a local attorney who serves as Chairman of the Beaufort Regional Chamber; Vimal Desai, an entrepreneur in hospitality here in Beaufort; Pastor Randy Roberts, a retired Marine who leads Love House Ministries and also co-owns a community bowling center; and Amy Truax Dunn, an entrepreneur and owner of Balance Boutique Fitness in downtown Beaufort. There are no candidate opening statements. Each candidate will have 90 seconds per question and have one minute for a closing statement. The order for first question and closing statements was determined previously in a random drawing. For those few here who are in the room, I ask that you refrain from applause or outbursts except at the very beginning and end of each forum. Without further ado, let's begin with the mayoral forum. Please welcome to the stage your candidates standing for election in this year's mayoral race, Councilman Stephen Murray and Mr. Michael Sutton. Mr. Sutton, the first question is for you, and it comes from Ben Koppich.
Good evening. Recent news reports. Recent news reports raise the possibility of closure of MCRD Paris Island. As an elected leader, what would you do to ensure the future of our region's military installations? If one of our bases were to close, what would be the first steps you would take to keep Beaufort's economy on track?
Well, right off the bat, we have the local legislature we need to be in close contact with. When we hear news such as what we've heard recently about Paris Island, the first call is directly to the state legislator, our local representatives who represent each one of us in the region. We need to get on it, get on it early. That's already happening now with Paris Island, and that's the first step.
Mr. Murray?
All right. Well, thanks to USCB and the Beaufort Regional Chamber for the opportunity to address you guys tonight. So, very disturbing, the possibility of almost $750 million of economic impact being withdrawn from our, from our community. I posted something on my social media a couple of days after the announcement was made. I don't think anybody should panic. I think the federal government moves extraordinarily slow, but I also don't think we should be complacent. So, already started the process of talking with local, state, and federal leadership to make sure that we're all on the same page, and that is number one. That base isn't going anywhere. We're going to keep training recruits there as like we have for the last 105 years. We're going to figure out a way to train females and males in an integrated fashion. And I also think it's an opportunity for us, while we have the conversation going with federal leadership and military leadership, to interject some ideas about how the Beaufort mission might move and might mature with the military mission. And I believe that's more brain power and less manpower over time. Initiatives like cybersecurity and cyber defense, autonomous underwater drones, autonomous airplanes. So I think it's a real opportunity for us. I think we've got to bring people together, be on the same page, and work aggressively as a unified community, which we have a long history of doing in Beaufort County.
Thank you. Mr. Murray, question number two is for you, and it comes from Mr. Desai.
Military hospitality and real estate have long driven the region's economy. Do you believe that multiple strong employment sectors create a more resilient economy? If so, what will you do to develop a more diversified economy in Beaufort?
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Desai, thank you for the question. I've, I've long said that Beaufort is, our economy is essentially a two-legged stool, built around military and tourism, and then real estate by way of tourism and, and the military. I think COVID, you look at the impacts of COVID on the hospitality and tourism industry, and now with the announcement by the feds and by the military that they might withdraw again, $750, $800 million worth of economic impact. So I think that's a wake-up call for all of us. For the last five or six years since I've been on council, we've been actively working to diversify our economy. I think that has to be done in a way that's sensitive to our environmental and historic preservation. And we've started really exciting initiatives that I've been a leader on. I was the founding chairman of the Beaufort County Economic Development Corporation that works to attract advanced manufacturing, innovation, technology, advanced distribution companies. We started the Beaufort Digital Corridor, which is right down the street from here. We've got three technology companies incubating for the first time in Beaufort's history. So, I think building that third leg of Beaufort's economy with high-wage jobs that help us weather these economic and governmental storms over time is critically important, not just for people diversity in our community, but also for tax-based diversity long-term.
Mr. Sutton?
Could you repeat the question for me? I may have a hard time hearing from the audience.
Military hospitality and real estate have long driven the region's economy. Do you believe that multiple strong employment sectors create a more resilient economy? If so, what will you do to develop a more diversified economy in Beaufort?
Back when I was elected in 2006, the, the local region was going through some annexation issues that basically laid out the groundwork for how Beaufort might grow and be able to establish a greater business community. Some of that work led into the Boundary Street Corridor renovation project that has established a much deeper and better base for new business growth. During the period I was on council as well, council took a strong move in Ball to Commerce Park in foreclosure from a local economic development group, it was a regional group, establishing the groundwork for what's happened today. Now, I hear a lot about the economic development from my opponent, but one thing that's not spoken often is what's happened in the last 15 years from council. City councils have long and strong understood a need for diversifying the economy and working to that goal. The business strengths of our community are easily known. The tax base is stronger on the business side than on the residential side. If, if business fails, Beaufort fails. It's a regional issue, however. Our city limits are small. We need to work closely with the partners in the region. Beaufort cannot back solely economic vitality of the entire region. This needs to be a larger community effort. The effort in the Commerce Park is great, it's working, it's starting to work. There's not a lot out there yet. The effort Stephen's done is actually wonderful, is exactly what he's supposed to be doing as elected official. That's what his job was when he was elected, and I applaud him for his efforts. But it is, there's more than just a third leg of the stool to make that happen.
I'd like to use one of my 30-second rebuttals.
Okay, for the, for the audience and those who are watching on the county channel and on Facebook Live, I just want you all to know that each of the, of the candidates has two 30-second rebuttals during this forum. Mr. Murray, you'd like to use one of yours?
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate Mr. Sutton's participation on, on council, and I think he's a well-meaning guy, and I appreciate the council's purchase of the Commerce Park. But I think it's important to point out that one of the reasons that I ran for council is that almost two years after they bought the Commerce Park, I drove out there, and on the monument sign in front of the park, there was a disconnected phone number in a Chinese website. Additionally, the bathrooms in the playground parking lot were closed, and I was told we didn't have the tax revenue to keep the, the doors open. And so, I, I think it's easy to say that we need to work on economic development, but I just argue that in five or six years, we've put almost $25 million in capital investment in economic development in northern Beaufort County, almost $10 million in the Commerce Park, and to addition to a whole host of other investments. So, I'd like to think that we're getting it done when others sort of just talk about it. Thank you.
I would like to rebut that.
Mr. Sutton, 30 seconds.
I encourage every citizen in Beaufort to drive to the Commerce Park today, dial the number on the billboard out there and see who answers. Okay? Stephen has not done anything to correct issues from the past, and he, he uses that as a, as a, as a stool to stand on. I drove through the Commerce Park, there's very little activity, the, the land's not being maintained, the level is actually causing neighbors to flood. The phone number goes to a city hall number with no direct link to economic development. You haven't done anything to fix the problem, it's your, your claim that the other council of years past has corrected, related to that particular topic. And I have the phone number on my phone, and I'll be glad to share it with anybody who wants it.
It's the city manager suite.
Dial it.
Third question, Mr. Sutton, stays with you, and that question comes from Pastor Roberts.
The pandemic, the pandemic has underscored an importance of high-quality parks for recreation and relaxation. Two-part question. Do you believe Beaufort has the right mix of parks and recreation facilities? And the other part of that question is, assuming limited funds, which parks would you prioritize for importance?
Well, Beaufort has over 28 parks, and we, we do have a priority issue. We do a lot of parks that are great and beautiful for people to come visit and stroll through, more passive nature, but we have very little in recreation, in the city limits itself. Now, the, the city gave up its park and recreation department years ago in a whole different economic time, and a whole different issues related. The county has struggled to maintain the parks at a level that our citizens could truly enjoy, and as we grow density, we're going to need to find ways to actually make those parks more friendly for people like soccer fields, pickup games and sports, basketball courts, things that actually bring a higher quality of life to the citizens that are here now. So, the question's a great question, is, we have beautiful parks, and when I was on council, we strove diligently to try to maintain the parks, and I was absolutely against adding more parks unless we could maintain them and create a way that the citizens could really use them. An example of a good park, but at a different level, is a Pigeon Point Park. Donnie Beer, on council time, worked hard to make that happen, councils that followed her followed through. It's a wonderful regional playground park for AIDS group, that's a certain, but where's the other AIDS group parks? Where are the places in the city as, as opposed to driving out of the city to find a park? We, the Open Land Trust just purchased a passive park on Ladies Island, has none of that's going to go for, we're going to, the city's citizens are going to be paying the bill for maintaining that, yet there's no pickup games and no sports activities going to occur out there.
Mr. Murray?
All right. That's a great question. Pastor Roberts, so, one of my big platform priorities is more active recreation for young families. If you look at census data between '05 and '15, we've lost about 25% of our 21- to 44-year-olds. And I think that's really sort of disturbing for the diversity long-term of our community, and I think one of the things we need to focus more on is active recreation. One of the first things I would do if elected mayor is form a Southside Park Task Force. There was one about 10 or 15 years ago. Again, you know, when my opponent was on council, they acquired the park almost a decade, no impacts, no improvements went into the facility. Since I've been on council in six years, we've put two dog parks in, we've put a walking trail in, and we're working on a plan to make additional impacts into that park. We made pretty significant impacts to Washington Street Park in, in the northwest quadrant, and I think we do absolutely need a priority list to look at how we can use parks to, to bring and attract more young professionals back, back into our city.
Mr. Murray, question number four stays with you, and is from Ms. Truax Dunn.
Good evening. In this time of COVID, people are more concerned than ever about their personal wellness and mental health. If elected, what would you do to make Beaufort a healthier community mentally and physically?
Yeah, Ms. Truax Dunn, thank you for the, thank you for the question. I think COVID, I mean, we, most of us feel blessed to live here, but I think COVID has made us feel especially blessed over, over COVID. I know for us, you know, it's, it's essentially ruined our businesses, so I've been coming home early and to be able to get outside and to walk through the neighborhood and go out on the river, when we talked to some of our friends in metropolitan areas that aren't able to have that same experience. So I think, again, looking at our parks and making sure that our amenities are up to par, I think working with the county and our partners in Port Royal to make sure the Spanish Moss Trail continues to have connectivity. There is a Greenways Plan and Trail that's partially funded through the last sales tax referendum, and so I think we need to make sure that those projects are moving forward so that, you know, it's exciting to me that a kid, I grew up in Mossy Oaks, a kid in Mossy Oaks can get on their bike, jump on the Spanish Moss Trail, which was a railroad track when I was a kid, and my mom would, would beat us if we crossed Reebok Road, right? Because you took your life in your own hands if you took a bike across Reebok Road. A kid will be able to jump on the Spanish Moss Trail, ride all the way to the sands in Port Royal, or the development in Port Royal, go all the way to sort of Burton and the Publix and what's happening in downtown Burton, or to be able to come downtown. I just think it's going to be a remarkable experience that's really going to help support the response from COVID and a healthy lifestyle long after we, we beat this pandemic. Thank you.
Mr. Sutton?
Well, it's a great question. The quality of life is important when, when you're healthy. When you're not healthy, it's not so great, is it? Beaufort's demographics are slowly changing. We're, we're seeing younger people starting to show up with families. There's a bigger demand, and the question earlier about parks and park usage. The Linear Trail that Stephen spoke to, the, the rail trail, is getting better used every day, it's, it's an asset. Safety in our streets is important, however, to make sure that we have communities where you can walk the streets, bike the streets, allow your child to cross the neighborhoods onto the park and run the trails, maybe make it to Port Royal and back. So, to answer the question, we're, we're getting there, but we need, it's a human consciousness of being outdoors. COVID did push people to do more home recreation, more activities around the family. I've eaten more meals at home in the last five months than I've probably eaten at home in the last five years, and it's actually changed the lifestyle. So, my wife exercises daily now because we're home more often, there's a chance to get out. She's working from home, so those things are a natural shift to the human activity. They're a way, like, I would say now, there's more people on the trail than there ever has been, simply because people are forced to stay home in this work environment. It's going to be up to the city to step up to the plate, though, and make sure we have the safe environment to, to make that stay possible and encourage that activity with other regional partners like the hospitals, even the university and their education and health programs. I know Bob is heavily involved in, in, in that part of, of life, his lifestyle's been strolling physical, so we need to bring people like that together and understand what are we missing. You know, the connector across Ladies Island has, has been there, the county's up to bat to fix that, but connecting the dots and making the city easily to transfer around, to walk around is going to be important, and I think we can get there, but we're going to have to continue to have that dialogue.
Mr. Sutton, question number five stays with you, and it's from Ben Koppich.
Thank you. In 1995, city council adopted a community policing policy. One of the 11 principles of that policy was building a closer relationship between the citizenry and the police department. What is your perception of the current relationship between the police and the community? And what is your vision for public safety in Beaufort?
Well, it's a great question, and having walked in their shoes, I've, I've been a deputy sheriff. When I retired from the Coast Guard, I did maritime law enforcement as part of collateral duties, became a deputy sheriff when I came home, went to the academy, I'm a academy graduate for the Criminal Justice Academy. Community policing is, is something that's taught in the academy, it's an important tool. Beaufort City struggles with an issue that's regional, in the sense that growth around us is, is causing a huge amount of service calls for people who don't live in the city who don't pay the tax burden that takes to hire our police officers to do the job they do. We're currently, or we were at two weeks ago, around nine or 10 officers down in the city police department. When you have service call levels, the volumes that these officers are doing, taking reports on a routine, regular basis, every hour, a reporter complains, it's very hard to get out and walk the beat and talk to people. I challenged, when I was a deputy, I challenged the officers that worked with me, and I didn't even encounter the city police officers when I owned a business downtown, to stop in, say hello, get to know who I am, I'm going to show you how you get into my business, I'm going to show you how you get on the roof of the building. That's community policing, when you know everything about your neighborhood and the people are there. We are going to have to find a way to get more officers on the street, and then the public's attitude about policing is going to have to change. Policing is not about them or us, it's about us, it's about we. We have to work together. You know, the, the police work for us. If you want community policing, you need to reach out and talk to those folks. They will come to you if they know you or to talk to you. The last time you want to see them is when you dial 911, that's the last time you want to see a police officer. I'd, I'd rather see them before we dial 911. So if we want community policing, we're going to have to change the civic attitude about what our police do for us. It's not, we're not against them, okay? They work for us, we need to be the police, ourself. We need to take care of these matters and make sure these police officers are protected and are protecting us. So, community policing, to answer the question directly, is probably not happening near the level the public believes is happening. It can be better, but it can only get better if we as a community step up and demand it to be better. And if, as your mayor, it'd be one of my top priorities to make sure that we have the funding to hire the police officers and the backup for those officers is there in city hall.
Mr. Murray?
Mr. Koppich, would you, would you mind repeating the question? I want to make sure I understand both parts.
Of course. In 1995, city council adopted a community policing policy. One of the 11 principles of that policy was building a closer relationship between the citizenry and the police department. What is your perception of the current relationship between the police and the community, and what is your vision for public safety?
Okay, thank you. I think it's a timely question. I think we have a great relationship between the police department and the community. I think it can always be better. I mean, as a small business owner, I think we can always improve our organizations, we can always have a stronger bond between local government, police departments, and their community they serve. I'm a strong advocate of community policing and the tenets of community policing. I've learned a lot about it over the last few months. When Unified Beaufort first started protests over the last few months, I was down there with Mayor Keiseling on the first Saturday that the protests began, wanted to have a conversation with our citizens to understand their concerns and help foster a conversation already in, in a public work session between Unified Beaufort, the Police Accountability Task Force, and, and our police department. I think we are, we are blessed and we are very fortunate to find Chief Matt Clancy. And he embodied a community policing philosophy and codified a lot of his philosophy in community policing in that department, but I think we have a large challenge in front of us of finding a new police chief. And so I've also encouraged an open, transparent process in which the community is brought in to help find the new police chief, which we're, we're beginning that process. I think we need greater data transparency in our police department. You'll see the police department's already putting out demographics of stops, they're putting out the number of stops and the type of stops, and, and that's not just good for the minority community, that's good for the entire community. A business mentor of mine said, "You get what you inspect, not what you expect." And I think in all of our departments, we need a little greater oversight, we need a little greater transparency. But I think each community needs to get down and understand and have this conversation with each police department. It's important to remember there are over 18,000 law enforcement agencies across the United States, there's over 800,000 law enforcement officers who get up every day and do a very, very difficult and dangerous job. And so I encourage each community to bring it down to this level, have a conversation with the community, with their police department, to see where positive steps can be made, because every organization is different. And so as mayor, you'd have my commitment that number one, we're going to go find a new police chief that embodies community policing like Matt Clancy did, and we're going to keep the conversation going between the community and between, between the police department, easy for me to say, in order to build a stronger tenet of community policing. We, we got a Justice Department nomination a few years ago for the diversity in our department. I think we're in a good spot, but I think we can always do better in all of our organizations.
Mr. Murray, the next question stays with you, and it's from Mr. Desai.
The city of Beaufort has a city manager form of government. Please briefly describe the traits that you, in your view, make a healthy mayor-manager relationship.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for the question. I think sometimes there's a misconception about the role of mayor, especially in the council manager form of government. Essentially, we're one vote on a five-member council. We help hire the city manager, the city attorney, we appoint the judges, in the body appoints boards and commission members. But really, that's about the power we have. We can stand up task force, we can stand up special committees, we have some agenda-setting privileges that are outside of council, and we have a larger role in emergency situations. But it's critically important that you have a great relationship with your city manager and with your staff, because they are your direct point of contact within the organization. It's illegal for council members or a mayor to direct staff to do anything, we have to move as a body, so it's a very fine line, and it has to have a good working relationship. Fortunately, when I first came on council, we had a, we had an issue with a previous city manager, and as important as that job is, it's really the CEO, the executive of, of the city, we replaced that person and brought in a new city manager who I think is one of the best in the country, a guy named Bill Prokop. While the politicians, we get to take a lot of credit for the things that are done in the city, at the end of the day, it's Bill and his staff who execute council's, council's vision. So, I understand the role, I think if you ask staff, I, I mine that line very well, because I think it's important that you understand chain of command. Not all of the political jurisdictions in our county do that, if you read the newspaper, but I, I am excited about working with Bill. I think as mayor, we have a stronger bond, a stronger relationship, and just look forward to continuing to do, to do the job.
Mr. Sutton?
Paraphrase the question, is a relationship with city manager?
What do, what do you describe as a healthy relationship between the city manager and mayor relationship?
Well, Stephen did a great job explaining that form of government, and truly, the city manager's hired to actually manage the city, and the council members hire the city manager and the city attorney. So, we're at arms-length on, on issues related, but there's a courtesy from the city manager that typically allows a council member or a board of council members to opine on select these that he may make for department heads, for example. It's a certain high level, like the police chief would be one that the city manager's not likely to simply hire without consulting his staff or his council. When I was on council, we went through, we hired the city manager Stephen spoke to, he did a great job, he got us to where we needed to be, and time was, time needed to go. I, I'm the type of guy that does the hard work. I was able to go in and negotiate the gentleman out, out into another position, and we were lucky that the second command or the finance director at the time is our current city manager, and I think we were all smart at that time to make sure that Bill stayed on as our city manager, who's probably one of the best we've ever had. It will be a time to replace Bill at some time in the near future. Bill didn't come here to stay on for life as a city manager. He's appointed a deputy manager that'll hold the line if something happened, but in the, in the near future, our council, the five members, not just the mayor, will have to go through the whole selection process again. But council members kind of, they must know the rules of engagement with the city staff and, and keep an arms-length, and build a relationship with the city manager, but not fall into the punch with them. It's, it's a tough business running a city in this day and age, and it's going to take strong leadership, that's neutral, that understands and listens to all sides before making a decision, and not buddying up or being in the punch with people. You've got to, you've got to hold the line at a, at a senior leadership position.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton, and the next question does stay with you, and it comes from Pastor Roberts.
Do you view development in Port Royal or other parts of the county as a complement or competition to the vibrancy of downtown Beaufort?
Well, having been a merchant on downtown Beaufort, when I retired from the military and came home, I opened the First Internet Cafe in Beaufort on Bay Street. I met my wife there and married, and she owns a store there now, Lulu Burgess. I lived and breathed Bay Street, so I know what goes on down there. There's always a fear about competition, but the reality is, there's a synergy that goes along with competition. Anybody in retail business knows that the competitor down the street only sharpens your skills and may put more money in your pocket if you're a good businessperson. I don't fear Port Royal at all. I think Port Royal is a great complement, it's a bookend to what Beaufort can be. As a boater, someone who uses a waterfront all the time, and somebody who's championing the ability to get on the water for all citizens, I think Port Royal is a natural link that connects Beaufort to the other end of the sound. So if Port Royal wins, we win. You know, when we talk about diversifying business, when a business opens in Port Royal, Beaufort City wins, they're spending their dollars here. If we build affordable housing in Beaufort, Port Royal wins. If we build affordable housing in Port Royal, we win. So as they develop, we win. Now, there's, there's subtleties and issues that we had to work through, and an example, a good example would be that we share a fire department now. So Port Royal is definitely not competition. They're our partner in a regional issue that we all are going to have to wake up and deal with, is it's the boundaries that we established for municipalities and the growth issues that... and deal with is its boundaries that we established for municipalities, and the growth issues that we have with those, they mix. You don't know driving across the bridge when you enter Beaufort or when you leave Ladies Island. So, we have to work closer together regionally with other leaderships, and we cannot view the successes of our neighbors as competition. Thank you.
Mr. Murray?
Yep, thank you. A rising tide lifts all boats. I don't see Port Royal as competition. I think we live in a dynamic community, not a static community. If you look at the growth projections over the next couple of years, we're going to need places for people to live, for entrepreneurs to open businesses. I'm excited for Port Royal. You know, we drive through Port Royal on a regular basis, my wife and I, we took the boat over to the Beer Garden last Saturday night. I think it's exciting what's happening in Port Royal. It's cool coastal and far from ordinary. They'd want me to throw that tagline in. I think it's great to see them establishing their own identity. I think from a tourism standpoint, it creates a new destination, a new sense of vibrancy and energy for us, which helps us with some of our tourism goals. I think for locals, it gives us a new, different kind of activity. And as Port Royal grows and becomes more successful, I think it opens the opportunity for us to collaborate better. Our shared fire department, almost 20 years now, is a great example of two local governments working hand-in-hand to the benefit of citizens. It reduces your cost, it reduces the tax dollars that you have to put into that fire department, on both the equipment side and the staffing side, and it gets you a great level of service. So, we're an ISO-1 fire department. That's something that we've achieved over my tenure on council. And so that reduces your property, your insurance tax cost a little bit, but also makes sure that if you ever have to call 911 for a fire department to roll out to your house, they're going to do it quickly, they're going to do it extraordinarily well-trained, and I'm getting the hand. So, absolutely, I think Port Royal and their success is our success.
And Mr. Murray, question number eight stays with you, and it's from Ms. Truax Dunn.
Thank you. "A tangible sense of history is essential to Beaufort's identity. This is one of the points made in the 2014 City Master Plan update. Please share how you will seek to strengthen the economy while preserving Beaufort's history."
Yeah, thank you. I think that's going to be one of our most critical challenges, right? How do we balance, how do we manage this growth and maintain over three centuries of preservation, of incremental growth in this just remarkable hometown that we live in? You know, kind of my tagline that I've come out over the campaign is "Opportunity for people, preservation of place." And so I think we've got to work diligently on the job diversity piece, right? Making sure that all of us, retirees, working professionals, young families, we have opportunity and can thrive and live in Beaufort. But I also think that we've got to focus a little on the built environment and what we allow. And there's a conversation going right now at council about design standards and affordable housing. And there are some folks saying that we need to reduce our design standards, we need to remove a bunch of regulation in order to make it easier and cheaper for developers to develop in the city of Beaufort. At the same time, my planning department is telling me that we're setting records in the number of new permits and the number of new projects that are happening in the city. So, I think because of the value proposition that we have built, we have cultivated, our forefathers and foremothers over 300 years, people are coming here. We don't have to cheapen our design standards, we don't have to reduce a pile of regulation to induce a pile of demand, it's already here. Our challenge is how do we make sure the process is predictable for both the preservation community and the developers, and how do we make sure that what we, how we develop is additive to our community and in the mass scale and context of the existing neighborhoods, while also trying to shape growth that's responsible over time. So, it's a huge challenge, but I think between the two candidates, if you look at my history over the last few years of understanding the nuances of growth, understanding the nuances of design standards, as your mayor, I'll work diligently to make sure we've got the right people at the table, and we protect this place, because it's extraordinarily important to our value long-term.
Mr. Sutton?
Well, having been in the construction world for a number of years now, and having started out my career in politics in Beaufort as on HRB, Historic Review Board, I burst myself deeply in historic Beaufort and what it meant to be historic and how to protect those guidelines that we have out there, serving on the commission, and now every day working to restore homes. We have bigger issues than some of the things that maybe spoke to about the pressures to lessen regulation. We have actually overburdened regulation in a lot of areas that makes things impractical to do related to preservation. We have issues environmental that are occurring right now that we're not prepared for, on historic structures being flooded by sea level rise. We need to make some revisions to our existing documents, not necessarily to lessen their ability to control development that might impair it, but actually to allow people to use their property, the investment they made, so they actually will stay here and invest in those properties. There's neighborhoods in our city that were built in low levels from the beginning. Mossy Oaks is a great example, annexed in the city in 1970s, and it's had drainage issues from the very beginning. It probably in these days would never have been built there. But the historic part of our town, what we consider historic mainly, is the Old Point area in the Historic District, National Landmark District. That also brings character, but there's also character in other neighborhoods, and characters in iconic places, things like the bridge across the river. There's iconicness in our downtown streetscape of three blocks. And the waterfront park is now becoming iconic. When you see the waterfront park, Henry Chambers helped put in there, you know, some people could argue that the piers were there were more iconic than a grass waterfront. But that's what we have today, and that's what we need to protect. And one of the biggest fears I have is we keep looking at the future of how to bring more and more and more to Beaufort, is we're going to forget the fact that we're trying to hold on to the things that we cherish dearly today. You know, the days of walking your dog down a neighborhood without people flying by, trying to get around traffic to get to the bridge, those are over. We're done with that. We're going to have to take our streets back so we can put signage and do things differently with our police if we're going to soften some of the neighborhoods into downtown. We're going to have to understand what the bridge means to us. If that bridge is iconic and you want to keep it, and I do, but I realize the practical side of it is obsolete, it's wearing out. Shannon Erickson has worked, and I know my partner here knows about this, in fact, the email today went around, it's been resurged to "Make it Historic Bridge," okay? So, that might be one piece we can actually accomplish. But it's going to come with a price tag, and who's going to pay it? The 13,000 citizens of Beaufort, are we going to pay that? Because DOT is not going to hand it to us. So, we're going to have to find other ways. If we want to keep some of these things, we're going to have to fund them. We cannot fund all the things we keep talking about from the backs of 13,000 citizens, okay? We're talking about parks tonight, we're talking about history, we're talking about some other things that cost money.
10 seconds, Mr. Sutton.
So, we need to work together on council and as a city, citizens and with our regional partners, understand what is it we want to save and what can we save.
I'd like to use my second, 30-second rebuttal.
Mr. Murray, 30 seconds.
Mr. Lefabi, Mr. Sutton, respectfully, tonight you said you would like to allow property owners to do what they want on their properties. In the forum last week, you talked about infill and more appropriate development, but then last week in the Island Packet's response, you proposed a building moratorium. So, I think probably need some clarity on a building moratorium or an advocate for responsible infill and growth. And the second thing on Mossy Oaks, three years ago, I'm glad you acknowledged that the Mossy Oaks problem has existed for a long time, over a decade. Three years ago, a resident called me, we got five inches of rain on an August, it flooded five houses. That was the third or fourth time that those houses had been flooded in three or four years. I went home that night, crafted emails with videos and pictures, and lit everybody up from the local, state, DOT, county level, made it a priority, applied polite pressure, although some of the folks that were involved might not think it was so polite.
10 seconds, Mr. Murray.
But I'm excited that we are three months away from finally fixing the Mossy Oaks stormwater issue. And so that's proactive leadership that gets things done, because we absolutely can accomplish the things that we are talking about, and parks, and job diversity, and appropriate infill. If we're committed, we're proactive, and we work with our regional partners.
Mr. Sutton?
I will definitely take my 30-second rebuttal.
Okay, 30 seconds.
Okay, look, he's put a lot of stuff out just now, you know, about Mike's wishy-washy, I think, what he was trying to say. The reality is, in the answer to the Gazette or to the newspaper about the regional growth issues, I made a clear statement that we may need to look at a moratorium on construction or development, but it can only be done if the citizens demand it, and we can get the parties that own the property together to discuss it. But we know exactly, we've been through this. On council, that product, that was brought up before. The comment was about that. On the Ladies Island, let's go to stormwater first. The stormwater issues, when I was on council, we set up the Stormwater Fund and made it possible for the work going on today. Everything we do in the city is a battleship term. The work that was done 10 or 12 years ago were the fruits of labor today. It's easy for a gentleman standing here for six years on council and claim all the fame to everything that's happened. He did not do that by himself, folks. There were council members, Georgia Kelly's sitting in the audience, he's an example of one. There were people who worked hard to get us to where we are today. And I'm actually offended that Stephen wants to keep claiming fame for some things that his group did. It's a singular. He already mentioned the city council is a five-member, we each get one vote. It doesn't happen overnight by himself.
Mr. Scott, you're the official timekeeper. I'll let you tell me if we have time for one more question. One more question, this one's a little closer to my heart, and it goes to you, Mr. Sutton. It's question number nine, and it's from Mr. Copey.
Thank you. "In South Carolina, there's a 40% shortage of nurses. The hospitality sector has faced a similar workforce shortage. The community is currently also working to grow new cybersecurity talent. If elected, how would you support the expansion of other career-focused programs at TCL and USCB?"
Well, living at, I live on the edge of TCL, so, you know, nursing has been a key focus for the city of Beaufort for a number of years, and we can graduate class after class, we don't seem to have enough. It represents now about 20% of the workforce in Beaufort is in the medical field-related nursing. Technical, my business in construction and service industry, we don't have any workers. We'd much rather see the technical college actually working on providing education for jobs that are already here in local, and I pay my salary to my people, over $15 an hour starting, and the top guy's making $30 an hour. So, you compare the notes on what we're asking for for future jobs, we have them here if we train the people to do them. There's, I could double-size my business tomorrow if I had the bodies walk in the door. Nursing, I'm sure it's the same way. I think we have to encourage universities to look at what we have now, train for the jobs that are available now, so that people can stay here and work in the jobs we already have, instead of keep looking over on what's on the other side of the fence. You know, technology moves so fast, the cybersecurity we're talking about, it's going to be outsourced and done before we know it. There probably won't be a need for the university to be teaching that stuff in the 10 years. But we're still going to need nurses, and we're going to still need the people swinging hammers and pouring concrete. We really have to think about what the fourth industrial revolution is going to do to our community.
Mr. Murray?
Yeah, would you mind repeating the question for me?
Certainly. "In South Carolina, there's a 40% shortage of nurses. The hospitality sector has faced similar workforce shortages. The community is currently working to grow new cybersecurity talent. If elected, how would you support the expansion of other career-focused programs at TCL and USCB?"
Yeah, thank you for the question. I think this dovetails into Mr. Sutton's rebuttal. Campaign is a little difficult for me. You have to sort of take credit for your work, but I do acknowledge the many teams of people and many leaders that I work with across this county. I often, I think, sort of the quarterback of the football team that helps get the ball down the field. But don't take my word for it, right? Between now and November 3rd, I asked that you, about my leadership and about the roles that I've played and the organizations that I've participated in. And I think that dovetails right into cybersecurity. So, I've helped stood that up over the last year. We've got TCL, USCB, Digital Corridor, the Economic Development Corporation. There's 300,000 job openings right now in the country, depending on what study you read, for cybersecurity jobs. They start at $70,000 and up. Within the next year, we will be training our kids in cybersecurity. Right here, we're working on attracting private sector companies. We've already got Hargrave at the table, other cybersecurity firms. I think we can duplicate that effort in healthcare. We've already had a conversation with Mr. Ian Scott at the Chamber of Commerce about bringing education, bringing government, bringing private sector, bringing the nonprofit medical community to the table, sitting around, putting clear goals out, leveraging our individual resources, setting up key performance indicators, and then checking back in in a miserable way. And I think that's how we get things done. You know, we hear these excuses about how long it takes to get the battleship term. And I, you know, it's easy to make excuses in government because there are so many players, and there's no one king, right? You have to work with people to get things done. But that's the difference of leadership. That's the difference of people who sit around the table, get things done, go get it done, and then check back in. And we can accomplish pretty remarkable results towards our goals when we have those kind of leaders in the room.
Gentlemen, we're now at closing statements. Mr. Scott tells me that Mr. Sutton was selected in the first position, so, Mr. Sutton, you will go first in closing statements. You've got one minute, and it's your conversation.
Well, thank you, Beaufort, for turning out tonight, and I hope to see this in the future on televised. It's an honor to be able to serve in my hometown as a council member, and it's an honor to be able to actually run for mayor. This is my second time. It will be my last time to run. I'm honest and open about that. I have a very active lifestyle that I enjoy. I'm at the ripe age where I can either keep working civically, or I can go out and enjoy some pleasures of the fruits of my labor. I choose to run and be civically engaged because I care about this community so much. I realize the hardships we have with regional growth. I realize the issues of trying to hold on to the pieces of our hometown that we remember in our age group or the different demographics. The younger folks may not understand some of the things we speak to about the quietness of neighborhoods, the ability to walk across the bridge at night and not see a car, that, you know, no crowded is at the boat ramps and things like that. But those things are gone, folks. We're going to have to work hard in the future to try to hold on to the little pieces we have left. I think that experienced council is important. I think Stephen brings a lot to the table. I don't think jumping out of council four years, or two years into your four-year term and run for mayor is the best choice. I tried it too. I failed at it. He might do better. But the bottom line is, Beaufort's not going to lose with either candidate, in my mind. I think Beaufort wins, hands down. The fact that we have six candidates run for city council, and we've got two candidates run for mayor, that's a good showing. And it means an opportunity. And hopefully, it means that other people will see there's a chance that they can get up and run and be civically engaged. And I think that's important for the chamber, Ian and his group, the university and their group, and the technical college, to keep doing what you're doing. It's important. And we'll get to where we need to be, but we're going to have to communicate better and work harder. And I think if you elect me as your mayor, I will allow Stephen to keep working on economic development, will be the first thing I'll do, because he's good at it. And second, I'm going to drive into stuff I do well, which is the brick and mortar. We have to fix some of the problems we have, and we have to get the burden off the taxpayers' backs, or the 13,000 citizens. We have to do things, champion the lost sales tax, for example, and share the burden with the regional visitors for some of the things that we're paying for now. We're not winning, folks. We've raised the millage rate 12 points in the last six years. You know, we're making a million dollars more in annual revenue, but we're spending over a million every year. So, when I left council in 2014, we were at 17 million, we're at 23, almost 24 million today in expenditures.
10 seconds.
And we have the same problems that we had then. So, what are we really doing to correct and right the ship?
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Mr. Murray?
All right. Well, again, I want to thank Dr. Lefabi, Ian Scott, Bonnie Hargrove, USCB, Beaufort Regional Chamber of Commerce, and the County Channel for the opportunity to come and talk about democracy in our city. I really think we live in the best hometown in the world. I've been fortunate enough to be able to travel all over the world. With our business, we could be just about anywhere, and we choose to be in Beaufort. I put a bridge on my logo, the Woods Memorial Bridge, for three reasons. One, because nothing says Beaufort like that bridge. And I think we actively need to work to protect that, we've got a plan for that. Two, because the mayor's most important role is to be a bridge between you, between citizens and their government. Government doesn't exist to serve itself, it exists to serve people. We didn't talk about it tonight, but over the last six years, we've got a more responsive, a more customer-friendly, a more transparent, a more predictable government, and we all win when that happens. We've made a lot of progress, but there's still a lot of work to do. So, my commitment to you, if you'll give me the honor of being your mayor, is that I'll always be a bridge, I'll always be responsive, I'll be in the community, right? I'll meet you where you are to hear your concerns, because I also think we get to the best decisions when we've got a diverse group of people around the table putting in input. And I think that's the mayor's job, is to help bring people together and weigh all of these tough issues. The third reason I have the bridge is because I see myself as a third-generation Beaufort native, who understands, again, 300 years of history and tradition and preservation of natural and historic resources, of an authentic people, of military investment, of northern investment, and how special a place that we've created. But I'm also raising two seven-year-olds, and I want them to have a future here, right? I think it's a shame that we have this amazing community to grow up in, right? I had an amazing community in Mossy Oaks. I got a great education, even though I didn't really want one in the Beaufort County School District. And then our kids have to leave. And maybe, if they're fortunate, they can retire and come back here. And again, that's a shame. And so I think, opportunity for people, focusing on our native kids, focusing on working with the educators, working with the private sector, working with local governments, to continue to make this a special place for everybody, not just the folks that can afford to live here. And then secondly- And then secondly, managing and balancing growth and allowing development, right? We've got to balance private property owners' rights.
10 seconds.
And we've got to do it in a way that's respective and authentic to Beaufort. And I think we can do that. And I think I'm the right guy for the job. So I just ask that you ask around about me. COVID's making it really difficult to get out and shake hands. But ask about me, ask about my family, ask about the leadership, ask about our companies. I feel like I've been training for this job most of my life, and so I'm ready to work for you. I'm ready to work tirelessly for you. And I ask that you vote Murray for mayor between now and November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. That concludes our mayoral forum for this evening. Mr. Sutton, thank you. Mr. Murray, thank you. And let's all please give these candidates a nice round of applause. Mr. Scott tells me we have a brief intermission where we'll get set up for our city council candidates. Welcome back to the Center for the Arts at USCB and our City Council Candidate Forum. I'm joined again by Bonnie Hargrove, the Executive Director of the CFA, Mr. Ian Scott, President and CEO of the Beaufort Regional Chamber of Commerce. Our four panelists, Ben Koppich, Vimal Desai, Pastor Randy Roberts, and Annie Truax Dunn. And of course, our six candidates seated one through six here. Ms. Mary Harvey, Mr. Scott Gibbs, Councilman Mike McPhee, Mr. Neil Lipsitz, Mr. Brantley Wilson, and retired General Mitch Mitchell. Our first question is for Ms. Harvey, and it comes from Mr. Ben Koppich.
While Beaufort has done a good job responding to COVID, the pandemic has had a significant effect on our community. What protocols would you like to see implemented to better prepare Beaufort for another pandemic or other public health emergency?
I'm going to stand. We've discussed this, all right. That is an interesting question with COVID. And yes, thank you, Mr. LaFavi, and also USCB. Right now, our stores are struggling. We've had businesses go belly up. We've had some, we've had sickness, but not, it's not been terrible. It's not been dramatic, in my opinion, but I'm not on the front line. I'm not in the hospital. What would I like to see? I think we still have a mask mandate, and I would want to continue that for a period of time. I think we need to maintain taking care of ourselves, people, and what is taking care of ourselves, but taking care of our physical well-being because we're not necessarily exercising. Some people are, some people are not. They're sitting at home vegging because nothing is opened. I would like to see our stores continue to open, and I would like to see... Oh my heavens. I would like to see us moving forward in, and I'm at a loss.
That's okay. The lights will do it. It's fine. Go ahead, you can wrap up.
Okay. I'm at a loss for what else I would like to see happen because I think Beaufort is moving forward. I think our tourists are coming back. I see that as a healthy sign. I would like to see us continue to do that. And I'm hoping that we're going to continue. I don't think we're going to have a terrible impact once again. But thanks for that awful question.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Mr. Gibbs, the same question.
Thank you so much, and good evening to everyone. And I similarly agree with Mary. I love that the city has the mask ordinance because I think when we first heard about COVID, I was one of the first ones when I heard that masks was one of those things that we needed to do. I was the first one to take my mask and stay in place. And I think this is maybe my third time coming out in a public event. So I actually like what the city is already doing with masks and the social distancing. And I see that they're taking that really seriously. I see the signs in the store windows and the restaurants. And so I'm certainly in agreement with what's going on at this point.
Thank you. Mr. McPhee?
Thank you. Thank you, Chamber, and thank you, USC, for having us this evening, and the County Channel for being here. I think it's very important from the standpoint of the measured safe reopening. And COVID hit a lot of our revenues very strongly with our hospitality industry and otherwise. And I think the need to, on a very metered level, bring it back to business, bring business back into the forum. People need to feel safe. They need to feel comfortable at being around other people and being shop in shops and stores downtown. So I think moving forward, we continue with that movement and pay attention to our healthcare people, pay attention to our DHEC, and make the appropriate calls with reference to metered openings and expansions where opportune affords.
Mr. Lipsitz?
I feel like we need to listen to our healthcare providers, the hospital. If they say masks are required, we should listen to them. They are required. They're saving lives. Furthermore, I feel like we should encourage the hospitals to stock up on their personal protective gear better. They need to be well-prepared. But the city itself has done a very good job in preparing. You can't prepare for something like this. There's no way. I mean, it's a once-in-a-lifetime thing. Hopefully, we will not see it again in our lifetime. We could, but there's really not a really true way to prepare for it.
Mr. Wilson?
When this all began, there was a lot of uncertainty around what we were dealing with. And I commend our elected officials at different levels of government for taking it seriously and taking a cautious stance with what was at the time a very unknown and potentially very dangerous circumstance. And it has proven itself to be more serious than some things that we deal with on a year-to-year basis. But I think also we're learning more about this virus, and I think we need to begin looking at restoring trust to our community, to our businesses, to individuals, to take some precautions to their own safety, and providing public information to people so that they have reliable information to base decisions off of, and allowing the free markets to restore back to their function.
Mr. Mitchell?
I just heard on the news today that the virus is resurging in Europe. It's resurging in the United States. I looked at a map of the United States, and there are more states that are red than there were last week. We need to listen to the professionals, Dr. Fauci and others. It's important that businesses reopen, but the only way that businesses can reopen and reopen safely is for the virus level to decrease. And that's not happening. With the flu season coming, combined with COVID, if we don't respect the professionals, it's only going to get worse. The economy will go into the dump, and everyone will be hurt. So the protocol that I would like to see is that we all wear a mask, just as we wore masks as we came here this evening.
Thank you, candidates. For question number two, Mr. Gibbs, we start with you, and the question comes from Mr. Desai.
A 2018 Beaufort County Housing Needs Assessment found that while 18% of Beaufort County residents can afford to only pay $500 in rent, only 6.3% of the rental housing market is listed for $500 or less. There is a similar misalignment in homes listed for sale. Do you believe housing affordability is a problem the city can help address? If so, how?
I certainly believe it is a problem. And I do know that there are organizations that, during this journey of mine, that I've realized that we could get with because I think they've already, some have already made some recommendations to the city. So it's certainly a problem, and I think that, you know, it would take that five-member council to work on that issue.
Mr. McPhee?
The Housing Needs Assessment proved a number of things with reference to our marketplace and the shortfalls both for, as Mr. Desai brings up, the sales market as well as the rental market. We're grossly under the opportunity for people that can afford rents in the 500 range. If you can find a $500 rental in Beaufort, it would be a monumental task, actually. We have initiatives in the affordable housing workforce and also in areas of infill redevelopment in the city that we've been putting a lot of energies and incentives toward with reference to being able to find ways to create affordable housing. Earlier conversations talked about the requirements or stripping the requirements or needs from our regulations in order to make it more cost-effective. And I think we've discovered through history that that does not necessarily serve that purpose effectively in the city. But we have found that in working with partners throughout the region, including grant resources and with the Land Trust for Housing Trust in South Carolina, that there are opportunities for grants and for housing trust fundings that will actually provide a cushion like the Habitat mentality of helping people build their own homes that would provide opportunities for better housing for all, our workforce housing, as well as our lower-to-middle-income level of people as well.
Mr. Lipsitz?
I feel like we should seek federal and state grants to try to help the people. The average house is right around like $250,000. I mean, there's no way some average person can afford to pay that, working person, much less find an apartment. So yes, we do need to seek out some federal and state grants, such as the Housing Trust.
Mr. Wilson?
So I think in housing, we're looking at two things. One, are the existing structures that are here that could be redeveloped and upfitted to a good functional purpose that are currently blighted or dilapidated. And I think establishing programs to be able to give some tax relief where people who invest that in those residences are not penalized on the backside with taxes, and a program such as was discussed with the grant might be a way to do that. I think we need to pass a local option sales tax so that we can reduce the property tax burden. That, you know, shifts around the cost for everyone and reduces what individual property owners and by extension landlords have to charge. But I also think as we're looking at the Affordable Housing Task Force that's been in place now, identifying places maybe outside of the critical historic district where we could have some standards that allow for more affordable development and construction that's still tasteful, but reduces the expense, I think is going to be key. The government can't fund affordable housing for the entire nation. We can set policies that encourage it, but the free markets have to carry that for it to be a real solution.
Mr. Mitchell?
Housing is definitely a challenge in Beaufort. We have a situation where many folks who have been successful elsewhere have discovered the beauty of Beaufort, and they want to be close to water and the clean air and the environment that we have here. We just don't have anyone in the middle. We don't have a situation where folks can have jobs that they can afford housing. While we talk about things like Housing Trust Funds, and that's a good thing, the real pride of ownership comes when you can buy it yourself. So we need to look at ways to, one, bring environmentally safe industry here so that we can have jobs so folks can afford houses. In the meantime, we must also work with developers and work with those interim programs, such as the Housing Trust Fund, where we can create a situation where that gap between affordability and cost can be bridged.
And Ms. Harvey?
Affordable housing is a major problem. The task force has already worked on how bad the situation is. You're mentioning a $500 limit. I have not heard of that one yet. I've heard of 750 as being the lowest rent being paid. That falls into another category, and there are, in fact, in place many different agencies within the city that are building apartments, but none are directly in Beaufort itself. They are located more towards Port Royal. They're going to have at the end of Duke Street, that particular affordable housing is going to go into, under reconstruction. And to understand that people will be relocated, where they will go at this point in time, I have no idea. So there are certain things that are in process, but nothing seems to point to everything. Brantley suggested that some of the houses and other areas could be developed, but then you also have to deal with heirs' properties, and how does that work? We can't force people to sell property that they choose not to sell. And yes, we're growing. We're growing where the medium-income family is between $35,000 and $50,000 that can afford housing, and they happen to be our nurses, teachers, et cetera.
Thank you, candidates. And for question number three, Mr. McPhee, we begin with you, and the question comes from Pastor Roberts.
According to a South Carolina Sea Grant Consortium report, nearly one-third of the Point District would be inundated with three feet of sea level rise, and 30% of the entire city would be inundated with six feet. Do you believe sea level rise is a threat to Beaufort? If so, what steps would you take to address it?
Sea level rise is no question a threat to our community. As we talked earlier in the mayoral forum about the drainage issues that we have in Mossy Oaks, we've identified nine areas within the city that have shortfalls as far as drainage that currently exist. And we've been prioritizing those with reference to our stormwater fund availabilities. We've been fortunate enough to be able to create grant funding for a lot of the work being done in the Mossy Oaks area as well as leveraging a bond with reference to stormwater. We are going to continue with that same process, moving down the nine identified areas. But there's, for at least the last three years, our council has been supportive of the sea level initiatives and the consortium. We have integrated the sea level rise in development processes within the city planning in order to look at low-lying areas that perhaps should not be developed in and look at areas where mitigation of floodwaters and storm drainage and so forth cannot effectively be done from the standpoint of cost-effectiveness. The idea that the Point, obviously, is our historic landmark district, the gem of our downtown area. That area, like Charleston, has similar burdens with reference to figuring ways to effectively maintain drainage and opportunity as the sea level rise can affect those sections.
Mr. Lipsitz?
Climate change is a reality, and we better prepare for it. Much of what Mr. McPhee said, I agree with. I mean, we need to move at a faster rate than we moved at Mossy Oaks, though. Mossy Oaks just dragged on and on, took forever to really get it implemented. Now that they know how to do it, let's get it done.
Mr. Wilson?
We live in the Low Country, and the Low Country is aptly named. I think as long as I've lived here, and many have lived longer than me, we've had issues with especially storm inundation and rainfall and accumulation that does burden our stormwater infrastructure here. And I don't think that that's going to change in the future in any kind of a positive way on its own. So I think that it's great that the city has taken the initiative to identify and develop strategic plans on what we can do to address the existing infrastructure and how it needs to be upfitted. I'm glad that we're able to secure grants, and I hope we continue to do that to try and defray some of that cost from the citizens. There are going to be expenses in some of these communities that are bordering the ocean and our coastline that are going to have to bear private costs. They're going to be cost borne by our local government and our regional partners, and hopefully some defrayed by grants. I think part of it comes to, as we look to future planning, that we need to make sure that what we allow to be built is built in a way that it's going to respect the geography of our area and in a way that we can manage well into the future. And that's a big consideration as we move forward.
Mr. Mitchell?
Well, sea level rise is a fact of life. Climate change is happening. The scientists have said that, I believe the scientists. The work that has started and is ongoing in Mossy Oaks should continue. And other areas, the Point, and other areas in the city, that work should be replicated. We should be seeking funds from the state, from federal levels, as well as any place where we can get monies, including grants. We should also, we may be getting to a point where certain areas, we should not allow to be built at all. And if areas, certain areas that may be built on need to be, the houses need to be built up so that should we have flooding, which is coming more and more frequently, the areas of the home or the structure that will be flooded will not be the living spaces.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes, as everybody else has mentioned, sea level rises are in fact occurring. And we had the opportunity to experience that about two years ago when we took boats through downtown area. And how are we going to address it is by, again, as everyone has mentioned, pretty much the same thing. We have to build in consideration of the water level. We have to raise our homes, which I do believe they are doing. We're already divided up according to the city maps. If you look at them, we're in different zones. My property happens to be half within flood zone, half without flood zone. So, and I believe that that's continuing to rise. We've already had maps that say this area is going to flood more than another area. We are a little bit higher. We're about We are a little bit higher, we're about 14 feet higher. And if you want to take and consider Yamasee, Yamasee will flood before Beaufort will flood if you want to put that in perspective of our flooding capacities. But that doesn't mitigate the fact that we have to be concerned about that and our stormwater drainage is not going to carry the weight of that. And it's an old structure and the city and the state have been working in collaboration with that. And some of the areas are in my neighborhood and we've been dealing with it and complaining about it, but the city can only move so fast as cooperation and grants would be a great thing for us to have. And it would help because it's a very, very costly position for us to be including more drainage and improving the drainage that we currently have. Thank you.
And Mr. Gibbs.
Yes, of course, this is not just unique to Beaufort and there are other places that are having the same problems. And so we certainly could partner with those to find out what are our best practices and what are they, what are they doing to help us on this end? I was looking the other day when we had this hard rain and it started to flood in my yard and that has never happened in the past year. So I know that that's going to become a very, very serious problem that we're going to need to look into.
Thank you, candidates. For question number four, Mr. Lipsitz, we begin with you and the question comes from Ms. Truax Dunn.
Thank you. Data from the CVB shows that each dollar spent on tourism marketing generates $7 in tax revenues. Do you view that as a good investment? If elected, would you increase spending on tourism marketing?
Well, I had a business downtown Beaufort for a number of years and I saw the effect of tourism. I mean, over half my business tourism. Marketing is definitely a very, very good investment. It doesn't just last just for that moment. It sticks in people's minds where they're going, next year or year after, they're going to remember those ads. And when they're looking for a place to go, where should we go? Should we go Nashville? Should we go, oh, let's go to Beaufort, that's a great place. So yes, it is a very, very good thing to market Beaufort.
Mr. Wilson.
It's my understanding that the funds that are used towards that effort are kind of directed by the state as far as the limitation of what they can be used. And I think that the panel that's given the task of trying to make those determinations has done a pretty good job. And I do think that those funds are a good investment on behalf of the city. I think that we should continue to invest in marketing as well as developing the aspects in our local area that draw people. So I think pushing out the advertising and pulling in with good attractions and a balanced investment in those is a good approach.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, tourism is very important to Beaufort and I think we should continue to invest in tourism to get more tourism dollars. But I should also caution that we've seen the effect of this thing called COVID and what it does, has done to tourism. So it's important that we diversify our economy. We need to bring in other businesses. We need to bring in investments that can alleviate some of this tax burden that seems to keep heaping on to the individual home, house taxes and so forth. So I said that I think there needs to be a balance. Yes, tourism is very important, but we have to be careful that we don't invest at the expensive other things that may help us to more even out our tax base.
Ms. Harvey.
Yes, I agree that tourism is vitally important to Beaufort. And again, as Mr. Mitchell has pointed out, that we have had a great reduction with COVID. And so do we need more marketing? Yes, we do. But I also have to agree that we need more opportunities for, and I want to use industry as a general term, because even though tourism is an industry, but we need things like our situation such as having our cyber center and building up the schools and the colleges that we have. And they would create, having them have jobs and opportunities which will help underwrite our tourism and market our other events that we have in here besides just having stores, which are lovely, and carriage rides, which are lovely, but they're not always going to last.
Mr. Gibbs.
And I agree as well. Yes, we certainly should. We know how important tourism has been, especially in our area. And when COVID came in, then that put a halt on it and also stopped a lot that was going on here in Beaufort. So it's very important that we invest in the marketing of our area because we need people to come back here. And COVID's gonna leave us and I truly believe that. So yes, I do. I agree that we should invest.
And Mr. McPhee.
There is no question. From the standpoint of our investment, the seven to one return is phenomenal. CVB needs to be credited with creating really innovative movement with reference to our marketing. They have done a phenomenal job. There is always a need, and I think that you hear a resounding commentary from all of us, that the diversification of economic development is extremely important to us. It has been a goal and a strategy for the city for a number of years and we will continue pushing that with our form, you know, our housing, our investments moving forward. I think one of the things that you need recognizing over time, going back to Hurricane Matthew, Hurricane Irma, some of the events that we've had in the past, the city has been very forward with CVB and the chamber and reinvesting money to let people know that when businesses were reopened after those events. I think COVID is no exception to that. Opportunity affords itself as our numbers decrease and the opportunity for people to feel comfortable about traveling. We need to make sure that that message is sent out and that the opportunity for ecotourism, our opportunities for outside, the Spanish Moss Trail is a great example, our waterfront parks, the 28 parks that we have in the city that give, that afford our residents and our visitors to have space and safety in being able to enjoy the beautiful Low Country, the resources that we have available. So there is no question. I think the money is well spent and in addition to the investment that we make with reference to our DMO, our designated marketing organization, which is the CVB, we also have the accommodation and hospitality funds that opportune for events locally to be expanded upon and grow in our marketplace to be a further draw for heads and beds.
Thank you, candidates. Mr. Wilson, question five will go to you. However, each candidate, as you know, you have a couple of 30-second rebuttals and I believe Mr. Lipsitz would like to use one of his.
In response to General Mitchell, I think we actually need to increase the amount of money spent. We've got some opportunities here. We've got the Reconstruction International Park and then we've got the upcoming Harriet Tubman statue at the Tabernacle Church. And these present a huge growth potential that seems to be getting overlooked and we need to promote it more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson. We start with you with question number five and that will, for this question, we go back to Mr. Ben Koppich.
Thank you. Recently, there's been significant unrest in our country associated with racial inequality and social justice. What is your perception of how these issues have affected Beaufort and what more needs to be done by city council to address these issues?
I'm so glad I got to start with this question. It's tragic to see the nation divided in the way that it is and I think that some of the recent events have spurred that to the public forum, but there are aspects that has been undergirding for some time that I think has brought out in the climate of today. And I think we need to do what we can to build trust and collaboration with all members of the community. And I quite frankly think one of the most important things we can do with that is trying to be sure that the elected council, who represents people by voice and by vote, is guaranteed to elect all of the community by changing to a single-member district. I think that would allow for us to have a guaranteed representative from different communities and stakeholders that gives diversity and helps to see that those things transfer down to different boards, commissions, task forces that are going to make the decisions and connect with the people and have that heartbeat level connection with their community from issues with roads and drainage that are in their area and their neighborhood, their parks, their streets, all the way up to larger issues of how our police force sets recruitment standards and what we do as far as our policies with taxation and assessment in housing and the way that that impacts different communities. So I think that a sky-level change has lots of granular impacts.
Mr. Mitchell.
Will you repeat the question? I just want to make sure I have a good understanding of it.
Mr. Koppich, would you please?
Certainly. Recently, there's been significant unrest in our country associated with racial inequality and social justice. What is your perception of how these issues have affected Beaufort and what more needs to be done by city council to address these issues?
Well, I agree there is social unrest in the country and I think there's social unrest here too. We have just been fortunate that it has not erupted in the way that it has in other parts of the country. And I think we need to do things to be proactive about that to address it. You know, there's a saying that your perception is your reality. And I've been talking to a lot of folks who have concerns, perceptions I should say, about the lack of representation of minorities on the city council. And in no way do I intend to imply that there has been any impartiality on the part of anything the city council has been doing, but when there are portions of the population that are not represented there, you can see how those kinds of thinking can really perpetuate itself. So that is one reason that I think that for everyone voting out there, that should be a fact and I'm not saying that you should vote for someone merely because they were born of a certain complexion or anything like that. But when you look at the qualification of those of us who are competing and you look at the void that has existed for 27 years, it should be a consideration so that there is a feeling that all of Beaufort are being represented. I'm not one who believes that we have to have a district that is carved out so that you can have mostly black people in it to drive a black person on the council. I think that a black person can represent anyone in Beaufort just as well as anyone else and anyone else can represent a black person, but you have to have it in your heart to want to do it.
Ms. Harvey.
I've been told that Beaufort is homogeneous and I would say by and large, yes, it is. Do we have inequality or a lack of balance in city council? I would say so. And Beaufort is growing and I would propose that we bring our board, our city council, up to six members. I think with six members would allow a more homogeneous city council. That would mean that there are those of color because as you look at all of us and you know there's two places, well, one, it may not have a woman and it may not have someone of color. So we have to start looking at what we are and how we feel that. And we are fortunate, as Mr. Mitchell said, to have not had the racial problems that other places in the country do have. And it might be undercurrent and I'm just ignorant. Nevertheless, I would like to see our, to maybe mitigate some of this problem. We have in all of our districts neighborhood associations and they are built up from the different neighborhoods and the different localities. And I would like to see them more active because we, the people, should become involved in our politics, not the people that sit on the board alone, because that's a big job for them. But I think that we should become more involved and I think the board should encourage these people. And most people do not know there's neighborhood associations and they're not developed fully, but they meet once a month and they do find out information. And I've learned a lot over two years as attending those meetings. Thank you.
Mr. Gibbs.
Yes, I feel too that of course there's unrest all over the world. In Beaufort, not to the extent that we've seen in other places. When the Black Lives Matter movement happened, that put everyone basically on alert. And so here in Beaufort, we don't share some of those same issues and problems, but that doesn't mean that that it's not going to happen. So I think like Mitch said, that we need to be proactive. And since we have an opportunity now to work on making it where we don't have that kind of issue, I think we need to do that.
Mr. McPhee.
I think it's really important in our community to recognize that I think there is an underlying systemic racism that exists within our culture and that's not just in Beaufort. And we have to recognize and try to go above that. I think one of the reasons that we probably had very little unrest in Beaufort, in addition to the fact that we have a very well-thought-of police department, which does in fact have a great deal of community policing that reaches out through our neighborhood associations and through our general police force and the mentality which has been set forth for our former police chief, Matt Clancy, who truly embodied that spirit within the police force. I also want to give tribute to the Unified Beaufort and General Mitchell and specifically in creating a very peaceful march that we addressed during the time of the highest, the greatest degree of unrest in South Carolina specifically, which we managed to do very peacefully with a great number of people from the waterfront park and through downtown. If you were part of that, it was a great afternoon and a great opportunity. And I think he deserves credit for recognizing that there was an opportunity to reach out to all the citizens and it's the epitome of community policing if you think about it from the standpoint of all the residents recognizing that we as a body are the people that make up our neighborhoods and we recognize that we wanted it to be peaceful and we wanted to make a statement. And I think that was accomplished and I think he won't blow his horn about it, but he deserves the credit for helping organize that as well. So thanks.
And Mr. Lipsitz.
Yes. First of all, I feel Beaufort was very fortunate during the unrest. I feel like we could do better. We need a little more community policing, as Mike said, a tribute to Chief Clancy. I think a police athletic league where the police officers can get to know the neighborhood kids and everything that we, as a council, me as a councilman, would encourage that. Also, I feel like maybe a satellite office on, towards the south side end of town would also go a long way in community policing. But as a community as a whole, we're very fortunate. We're Beaufort Strong. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. And for question number six, Mr. Mitchell, we begin with you and that question comes from Mr. Desai.
With so many households being impacted by the current pandemic and entertainment venues diminishing, what is the most pressing quality of life issue for you and why?
Well, that's a very, very interesting question. So you did ask for me and why I think it's most pressing. I think that, you know, the situation that we find ourselves in with COVID has kind of magnified some of the underlying things that's happening in our society, especially the health issues. The health issues or the lack thereof of our citizens. Those who are at the bottom rung of society, COVID has really laid that bare to be seen. And yet there are many of, many of those same folks are, you know, on the forefront of fighting COVID. So, you know, the health issue that I'd like to see is really healthcare for all. And I realize that, you know, we're talking about Beaufort specifically, but I think those, that the whole healthcare, if everyone had a level, a minimum, whatever that standard is, care of healthcare, I think some of these problems that we're seeing now that's affecting the communities that have been struggling the most might be lessened. So I would say healthcare for our communities and our citizens.
Ms. Harvey.
I'm going to have to ask to repeat the question because I really did not hear everything you asked.
Mr. Desai, please.
With so many households being impacted by the current pandemic and entertainment venues diminishing, what is the most pressing quality of life issue for you and why?
Okay, and what is diminishing?
So...
What is he saying?
The venues...
The venues.
For entertainment and all those things. So what, for you, what is the most pressing quality of life? For Mr. Mitchell, it was access to healthcare.
Entertaining venues, okay. I guess for Mr. Mitchell, I'm thinking a little bit different if you're talking about entertainment.
Quality of life.
Quality of life, okay, thank you. I didn't think I was that dense. Nevertheless, quality of life. My husband and I hunkered down. We just stayed home and we stayed close. So basically, maybe we're ignorant about some qualities of life. The one thing that I noticed which occurred during COVID was the fear factor. The fear factor has become paramount in most people's life. The fear factor has become paramount in most people's lives, and so that's impacted their entire life. They're afraid to go out the door. They're afraid to visit with anybody. They're afraid to go to the grocery store. And so I think this is a concern, and how do we address that? And I think somewhere along the line, it comes down to how do we address mental health? How do we address the people that are actually physically sick and ill? And then the other question is, who has COVID? And how many of us do have COVID? So I know it sounds strange, but this is how I'm interpreting what you've asked me, that a fear factor and how we've impacted, I think it's kind of shortened our lifestyle in Beaufort. And so people don't shop, stores go under. And I think that is about as far as I can address what you've said.
So, Mr. Gibbs, we have healthcare, we have fear and anxiety. What's the most pressing quality of life issue you see?
Well, not being able to do those wonderful things I was doing in the community. I'm a community choir director. I perform, I did lots of performances, I'm a singer, I've done some acting and directing. And so as a, because of COVID, I had to unfortunately stay inside. So for me, it's being out in the community and not being able to interact with my fellow citizens.
So we have healthcare, fear, anxiety, isolation. Mr. McPhee, what can you add?
I think for Beaufort and for us in general, the most important thing as a quality of life standard, we are so fortunate comparatively. And, you know, it's easy to say that, because we all feel some oppression as far as what we've been able to do and the freedoms that we've had and those restrictions that we've had imposed upon us for safety measures and all of the issues that we've talked about this evening. But the beauty of this community is the fact that we, indeed, as a community, the outreach. My neighbors that are elderly and people within other areas of the city, the neighbors that are more able to go to the grocery store have been helping them go to the grocery store, because they're not comfortable going to the stores. They have had opportunities where people that were doing work for them were not able to come in, or they were not able to have people in. And neighbors have pitched in to take care of things that would have normally been done by outside contractors coming in. It just shows the breadth of what kind of community we are. And I think you see it throughout, pervasively, through all of our communities and all of our neighborhoods, that neighbors have gotten actually an opportunity, though socially distanced in a way, we're all sort of in it together. And because of that, it has that congealing of us being available to help people. And I think it's made people more aware of those needs and needs within their communities and within their neighborhoods. And I think that has actually been a positive part of it, with the understanding that as we move forward and we have the opportunity of making that even greater and making our communities even stronger coming out of COVID.
Mr. Lipsitz?
Everybody's looking at the glass half-empty, I'm looking at it half-full. I mean, I'm looking at what we do have. We've got the Spanish Moss Trail, we've got all these parks, we've got the waterways. I mean, Beaufort's unique. Yes, we do have the downside, but look at the good things we've got. One good thing I would like to see us have, which I'd like to bring up, is South Side Park. My main thing is I want to see plans for a playground there for the kids. You've got that big empty place there. We've got a place for our fur babies, we don't have for our other babies. We need a park at South Side, a playground at South Side Park. And as councilman, that could be one of my priorities. Mossy Oaks is the biggest community, the biggest neighborhood in the city, and there is no park, except at Mossy Oaks, which is not available a lot of the times. So, yes, obviously, things is half-full.
And Mr. Wilson?
So I'm going to say, hands-down, mental health. And working in the school system as an administrator and the one charged with safety and security at our school, I see this on a lot of levels, on the faces of the kids that I'm looking at through the screens, on the phone calls that I deal with with parents, and seeing the search patterns as we assess threats for the, you know, practical flags in students' minds. And I think that this is on multiple tiers. There's a climate of fear around the virus itself, and people concerned about contracting that and illness that may spread. There's a perception and a reality of isolation because of the distancing and the masking and the things that tell us to stay at arm's length from people when we feel that we should be connecting and supporting one another in places like our churches and other community areas where we would look for that support. And I think it's something that, as the city, we need to really look at, what is the cost of some of the interventions and the perception and climate that we have? And how can we start changing that attitude in the community by rolling things back and encouraging people as safely as they feel comfortably to start engaging again in these community things? And also building back economic development so we can start relieving some of the stress that's added on top from the economic uncertainty and loss of our current situation.
Thank you, candidates. And Ms. Harvey, we're back to you for question number seven, and it comes from Pastor Roberts.
The city's 2020 recommended budget shows 41% of expenditures going towards salary, which is the highest of all expenditures. What do you say to those that may take issue with salaries being the highest budget item?
Well, I think possibly you might want to talk to those people that are receiving the salary. They probably won't contend. We have, I thought our budget was relatively well-balanced. The people, they might say that with the expenses going out for budgets, but it's quite a large group of people that are receiving money. I don't know that anybody's making a tremendous amount of a large salary. I don't think we have people that are incorporating that. So as a 20% of our income or our salary going out for that, I looked at the budget three or four times, and I just could not figure out where we could reduce things besides cutting people's salary. Because we have two and a half people working in one department. Now, can you explain two and a half people that you're being paid for? So it seems very strange. We've cut positions and made people do double jobs. I'm not sure how I would address 21% other than sitting down and looking at the figures once again with even greater a fine cone. I know that we're bringing in considerable amount of taxes from buildings that are being constructed, there's underlying taxes there that are paid into the city coffers, we have money coming from a variety of other places, but I'm not quite sure what I would do about income.
Mr. Gibbs?
Would you read the question, please?
The city's 2020 recommended budget shows 41% of expenditures going towards salaries, which is the highest of all expenditures. What do you say to those that may take issue with salaries being the highest budget item?
And the only thing I can say to that is that we have to pay for the services that we seek. And so I don't have, basically, anything to say against that, because I think if you're paying them the salaries, you're getting qualified people.
Mr. McPhee?
This year's budget actually was dimed down a bit because of COVID. COVID impacted, from our budget standpoint in the city, the revenue sources. And in order to balance a budget, which is a requirement of the city, we did back off on a number of the capital improvements and projects that we have. My response to the degree of percentages, your greatest investment as far as any organization is your human resources. The availability of the talent and the service-related needs that we have within the city, our citizens expect a high level of service for the 14,000 residents that we have in the city in general. We have a top-notch police department, a top-notch fire department, a great planning staff. We have wonderful Team Beaufort employees that work tirelessly. The 2.5 members within a department are typically geared to the cost-effectiveness by using cost centers and putting their job descriptions within the departments that they spend most of their time in. So we have a very transparent budget that you can actually look at that. So when you see a partial person in a department, it's not necessarily because they're wearing 13 hats or they have more jobs than they can do, but they may have half of their salary paid by one department and half paid by another department. So the other half of them are in another department. But the quality of people that we have in the city, I think, speaks in high volumes with reference to the ability for us to deliver the services that our citizens expect. And I think you'll find each of those people to be highly geared and trained in customer service.
Mr. Lipsitz?
Yes. Any corporation, salary's going to be one of the most expensive things you come apart in the corporation. I want to be a board member on this corporation, the city of Beaufort. Anyway, are we getting our money's worth with these employees? Yes, we are. We have great city employees, and they produce a very fine product, the services they give. So, yes, it is justified.
Mr. Wilson?
So I'm going to echo what others have said, but I think most organizations see that as their biggest outlay for salary and benefits. And I don't think that's necessarily a problem. I think the question goes to, are those things being allocated in the right places? Is the distribution towards leadership and line-level workers equitable? Are the accountability and growth targets for those employees set in a way that guarantees that all members of the community across all areas of the city are receiving services to the quality that they believe they should and are entitled to from their tax investments in the community? But in general, having a high investment in good, quality human resources is going to be important for the development and growth of a city. Just a question of making sure that those resources are implemented in the most effective way.
And Mr. Mitchell?
Well, it's, I don't think it's unusual to have salaries ranking pretty close to top of the cost for any organization, be it a business or probably the city, like we're experiencing. And the other thing is that there's no such thing as doing more with less, just means the less people are doing more. So if we're going to have qualified people to do qualified work, we have to be competitive. So I think the salary is kind of where it is. And I'm sure, I'm not on the council yet, but I'm sure that those that are there are very conscious of that, especially given these difficult times.
Thank you, candidates. Mr. Scott, I'm going to push the envelope here a little bit, and I'm going to give each of you 20 seconds to answer yes or no to the question that Ms. Truax Dunn is going to ask specifically about the Spanish Moss Trail, if you will. Ms. Truax Dunn?
Certainly.
And we will start, Mr. Gibbs, with you.
Certainly. Do you support the extension of the Spanish Moss Trail to downtown along Bay Street?
Very briefly, yes or no?
Yes.
Mr. McPhee?
I do support an extension into town. Where it will be, that's the question.
Mr. Lipsitz?
Support an extension, but I would want a citizens' group, all stakeholders involved, to find out how it's going to go.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, and I would like to see some pocket parks and other additional parking spaces along Vilton while that's done, so that it can be more utilized by people from different starting points.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, and I would hope it comes with a few restroom stations along the way.
And Ms. Harvey?
Actually, no. I do not support it. I feel as though there are other means, and I feel like it would be too disturbing to an area that's already utilized by people that enjoy the areas to sit and enjoy and not have biking come through.
Thank you. Ms. Harvey, we stay with you, because we are now at the point of one-minute closing statements. This is your conversation, you to explain to the populace why you should be on city council.
Well, the one thing that I have to say with you is that I'm pretty straightforward and honest. If I don't know what I'm talking about, I will tell you so, and I think I've done that tonight. The questions have been interesting. I appreciate that. I have had a lot of experience in just getting things done. I have worked with Family Promise, making sure people have been housed, which is for homeless families. I have worked with that. I have worked as United Community Task Force, seeing to it that children are fed and taken care of. I have worked with the Historic Beaufort Society, and I have also worked with being a librarian, working in school districts and helping children. And as I told Mr. Wilson, I was asked by my children to please stop teaching because I was making sure the kids do too much work. So I have ability to get things done. I'm also the oldest member, but that's okay. Moses led people when he was 80. Thanks.
Mr. Gibbs, your closing statement.
Thank you, thank you so much. And again, thank U.S.C.B. and the Regional Chamber of Commerce for hosting us today. This has truly been an honor for me. This has been a new journey for me. This was not something that I had on my bucket list to do. I'm retired after 33 years of service at Department of Social Services, and so I thought I was just going to be retired. But there was a calling on my life when I heard there was an opportunity to serve in this capacity. And so I wanted to take that opportunity just to give back to the community, to give of myself, to be of service. My slogan says, "I'm ready to serve and want to be a voice and ear for an even better Beaufort." So I'm going to work hard for you. I give 100% of myself. I lead from my heart. So you will always get all of Scott Allen Gibbs if you vote for me between now and November 3rd. Thank you.
Mr. McPhee, your closing statement.
Thank you again for our hosts for having us this evening. We greatly appreciate it, especially with the social distancing requirements. But thank you for those that attended inside, those outside on the lawn, and also those on the county channel and through our Facebook Live. I've spent the last three terms working for the citizens of Beaufort. I think my reputation would indicate that I am an engaged person, that I listen to you. I tend to be more reflective on council and less of the person that will take up a lot of conversation in council meetings, because I'm listening to what the people are saying and in taking that into consideration with reference to the things that we are putting in place to make this a better community. I would greatly appreciate your continued support beyond council. I recognize also that we have a great forum. It's a great opportunity, the mayoral candidates mentioned this once earlier this evening, that we are blessed to have two great candidates for mayor and six great candidates for city council. And I think moving forward, it's going to be a plus for our community. And so I thank you for your attendance tonight and your consideration. And between now and the 3rd of November, I hope I can count on your vote. Thank you.
Mr. Lipsitz, your closing statement, please.
Thank you. As many of you know, I've lived in Beaufort my entire life. And you know my love of the city of Beaufort. Even in college, I came home on weekends many times. That being said, a few questions. If you want somebody to hold the line on taxes, I'm your man. If you want more affordable housing, I'm your man. If you want more clean energy or clean industry, I'm your man. If you want to see a playground, children's playground at South Side Park, I'm definitely your man. If you want a full-time councilman, no other job, just councilman, I'm definitely your man. I'm asking for your vote for Beaufort City Council, and remember, I'm your man. Thank you.
And Mr. Wilson, your closing statement.
I want to again thank U.S.C.B. and the chamber for putting this on. This is a great opportunity for all of us to present ourselves to the citizens to hear about us. I'm a third-generation Beaufort native. I'm living in a house that I bought two blocks away from where I was raised in Mossy Oaks. The past three generations of my family, including my brother right now, serve in the military. I have a value for that. I'm invested in my local church, where I've worked with young people who are trying to get a start here, both singles coming right out of the military or growing up and trying to set a life here, as well as young married families who are raising kids and trying to invest in the future. I've invested myself in our local community service organizations, the fire department, at our water rescue. I've worked with our local police and community policing, right on our school campuses, as the school resource officers invest in our youth. I've spent 12 years working in career development, where I worked at the Academy of Career Excellence, helping to develop programs for students to get skills that are practical and give real-world jobs without a debt investment for opportunities that our Department of Employment and Workforce, they are here right now. And I'm invested in continuing that work. And I'm entrusted with the leadership of 1,000 students at a middle school where I serve as an administrator and have had the opportunity to build consensus and solve problems and try to mitigate the things we're working through. And I'm raising three little boys. And so I'm here in this community with an understanding of our past and our heritage and our values and the beauty of this place, and a true personal investment in the future. I look forward to your vote.
And Mr. Mitchell?
I want to thank you, Dr. Lefavi, Mr. Scott, U.S.C.B., the Chamber of Commerce, those of you in the audience, those of you listening outside and online. It's especially my humble privilege to sit on the stage with...
It's especially my humble privilege to sit on the stage with these esteemed gentlemen and lady. My life has been a life of service. I spent 33 years in the military, six years as a Marine, remained there as an airman. I've been trusted with our nation's most valuable resource, your sons and your daughters. I'm, you can't incentivize a military person with pay because any officer or any person in the military with a certain grade and number of years gets the same pay. You have to be able to motivate people to do because they want to do. I've done that. I am the second major general from Beaufort since Robert Smalls. I know how to work as a team member and as a leader. I don't have all the answers, but I know that when we go into the room, that's part of the exciting part. You don't have the answers, but the answer resides in all the heads, maybe collectively in the room. You may not come out with the best solution. But like we say in the military, you got to shoot, scoot, and move. You got to do something. You got to move out just to see whether that decision is right. And we correct from there. There has been a lot of bad history in the United States, especially when it comes to people like me. But we can't build a future if we stay in the past. We can't meet wonderful, great people if we keep burying ourselves in the past. So I'm one to move forward to make Beaufort a better place for all Beaufortonians. It starts because by having jobs, if we have good jobs, we can have good houses and pride and ownership of homes. And my last is the social justice speech. You know, I led the peaceful march in Beaufort.
10 seconds.
Because I needed to get a pulse of what Beaufortonians felt. If we don't learn to treat each other as we would have been treated ourselves, none of the other stuff will matter. I'm your person to do that, and I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates, and a big round of applause for our candidates. Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of Dr. Al Panoud, Chancellor of USCB, Bonnie Hargrove, Executive Director of the CFA, Mr. Ian Scott, of course, President and CEO of the Beaufort Regional Chamber of Commerce, I thank you for joining us this evening. Have a good night, get out and vote.
The County Channel is also available on video on demand. Go to beaufortcountysc.gov, scroll down to Public Meetings, click Watch Now, and then click the Video on Demand button and select your program from the list.
Call meeting to order.
If you'd like a DVD of this program, click on the link on the right and fill out the order form. And thank you for watching the County Channel.
This is Larry Rowland, and this is a Beaufort County Moment. The old arsenal on Craven Street in downtown Beaufort is a very historic place. The building itself was built in 1798, but the place is the spot of the former Beaufort District Courthouse, which was built in 1769, the first court outside of Charleston in this part of the colony of South Carolina. The courthouse was where the assembly met in 1772 when Governor Montague attempted to move the capital from Charleston to Beaufort. It was for four days in October 1772, the capital of South Carolina. Of course, that political maneuver did not work, so the courthouse was abandoned. And after the Revolutionary War, the Beaufort District Court was moved to Cusahatchee, more centrally located in the district. The old courthouse apparently fell down. And on that site and with those bricks, they built the Arsenal Building as a refuge, a jail, and a military installation for the military organization which made its home in the arsenal was the Beaufort Volunteer Artillery, which actually dates to 1763, making it one of the oldest continuously operating military organizations in South Carolina. The arsenal became their home for the Anabellum period. It was built as part of the militia act of the state of South Carolina. It was a citadel, a place of refuge, a place for the maintenance of arms in case of servile insurrection. In other words, an uprising of the slaves, which was always feared in a district where the slaves outnumbered the white folks 10 to 1. So the arsenal became a symbol of the white establishment in Beaufort. It became the home of many colorful events. There were celebrations, there were dinners. The Beaufort Volunteer Artillery often hosted those events. And in the late Anabellum era, the old arsenal was rebuilt and redesigned in a Gothic style. The designer was probably Major John Gibbs Barnwell, who was major of the Beaufort Volunteer Artillery before the Civil War. And the arsenal became the home of the Beaufort Volunteer Artillery, which served at Bay Point during the Battle of Port Royal Sound, which retreated during the occupation of the islands. But the arsenal remained as a symbol of the Anabellum era of the town of Beaufort and of the Beaufort District. This is Larry Rowland, and this has been a Beaufort County Moment.
To see more Beaufort County Moments, go to the Beaufort County Library homepage and click on the Local History tab.
Cars all over Beaufort County are being targeted by thieves. We want to remind you not to leave valuables in your car and to keep your doors locked. If you have any information about recent thefts, please contact the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office or Crime Stoppers.
This is the salt marsh, one of the most beautiful and productive habitats on earth. It's home to an incredible diversity of marine invertebrates, fish, and even reptile species like this diamondback terapin. Many of the animals that live here grow up in the Spartina nursery before they move into the rivers, sounds, and open ocean. Join us for Coastal Kingdom, a field trip through the Low Country and a chance to meet some of the animals that live here.
Hey, guys, I'm Adam Farber with Beaufort County Libraries, and I wanted to tell you about our new streaming service called Hoopla. It's a free service from Beaufort County Libraries. All you need is a library card, and it's available on iOS, Android, and desktop computers. I have an iPad and will download the Hoopla app. You can get up to 10 titles per month. For more information, visit us at beaufortcountylibrary.org.
I'm from South Carolina, and my vote counts.
I am from South Carolina.
The Palmetto State.
Mi voto cuenta.
I'm a South Carolinian, and my vote counts.
And my vote counts.
This year, thousands of South Carolinians will vote using the newest, most advanced voting technology in the world. Every vote matters, and every vote counts.
I'm from South Carolina, and my vote counts.